Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please help me welcome the Barksdale Elementary School Buccaneers and Principal Kristi Rube. To introduce our inspirational speakers, we ask that our students please lead us in the pledge of allegiance for after providing the inspirational message. Welcome.
Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates, Board Members, Cabinet, and guests. I'm Kristi Rube, the proud principal of Barksdale Elementary School this year. We are delighted to give the inspiration tonight. I have with me tonight Alejandra Mendez, Martina, fifth grade, Riley Thompson, fourth grade, Channing Morton, fourth train, Josiah Sutton, third grade, and Christian Evans, second grade, and I also have with us Lily Hampton in fifth grade. And tonight they will be reciting a poem for you. Okay. "Let No One Steal Your Dreams" by Paul Cookson. Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tear apart the burning of ambition that fires the drive inside your heart.
Let no one steal your dreams, let no one tell you that you can't. Let no one hold you back, let no one tell you that you won't.
Set your sights and keep them fixed, set your sights on high. Let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky.
Let no one steal your dreams, follow your heart, follow your soul. Only when you follow them, you're truly whole.
Set your sights, keep them fixed. Set your sights up high, let no one steal your dreams, your only limit is the sky.
As a token to remember our inspiration tonight, we have Lily Hampton, our fifth grade student here, and also Allison Rico that was not able to attend tonight, but they have created bookmarks in representation of their interpretation of this poem. We hope that you will use this bookmark the next time that you pick up a good book to read. It's gonna come up again.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, prior to adoption of the agenda, I do have a motion to amend the consent agenda, the new business consent agenda to remove item four therefrom and place it on the new business discussion agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Any discussion? One in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The agenda for the consent will remain in place. Thank you.
We got a vote for it.
Oh, we just did?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes. I'm gonna get to that. Thank you very much. Thank you for the reminder. A motion has been made. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second Akita.
A motion has been made to approve the agenda by Ms. North, second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, seven to zero. Is that correct? All right. Next, we welcome the Memorial and Principal Charles, Memorial School Principal Charles Shavers to provide the school presentation. Is he here tonight? Okay, thank you.
Good evening Board Members, Staff, Students, and Parents. This is Memorial Middle School's presentation of our STEM students working through our STEM garden. Students were challenged with turning our garden into a monarch waystation, and this is the progress that they've made so far. Introducing our students are as follows.
Hi, my name is Ava Smith.
Hi, my name is Jaren Dana.
Hi, my name is Jaren Dana.
Hi, my name is Sydney Jean.
Hello, my name is Kayla Ferracho.
Hi, hi. My name is Chloe Blessing-Miner.
Problem with our garden, the problem with availability of water in the garden is that there are no water sources. We need to have a source of water outside that's not only rainwater. You should have water hoses or rain barrels that we can use to have water sources. According to water for the gardens, for a community or school garden to have success in Georgia, there should be a source of water other than rain. And even though the state averages about 50 inches of rain a year, it's normal to have days or weeks without rain. This may be another source that we can provide adequate amounts of water. We also do not have pollinator plants, which means our garden's not a pollinator garden. This means we need pollinator plants to create a monarch waystation. Our STEM garden is located in Conyers, Georgia, and here are some fun facts. Did you know that Conyers began the town in 1854 with now the public area size of 17,508? The area size of Conyers 11.9 square miles, meaning 0.1 square miles of that land is covered in water. Today, Conyers is in Rockdale County, Georgia, also located in the Piedmont region of Georgia and the United States.
Solution. We can bring rain barrels to collect water, and we could use straws or pipes as transportation source so the water can get to the beds. When the water makes to the garden beds, it'll distribute water evenly around our bed. If we won't, we can create a drip irrigation system by poking small holes into each straw or pipe.
Hi, my name is Sydney, and here are the costs and benefits of the garden. The benefits of these supplies are that they can lead to a healthy and fast growing garden. The plants will be purchasing, be able to attract pollinators, and the rain barrel will be able to evenly distribute water and stimulate growth in our plants.
On week one, we took some P8 samples of our soil. On week two, we pulled out all the weeds and danced for some reason. On week three, we put out some more weeds that grew back, and then we tried to till our soil with the shovel so that we would have some space to grow more pollinator plants. On week four, we made some enhancements to our garden box model and added fertilizer. On week five, we tilled our soil and laid out where we were going to plant our pollinator flowers. Action steps. First, you take the measurements of the box and make sure it is equal. If it's not, use a sledgehammer. Second, till the soil. Do not remove excess dirt. If there is excess dirt, push to sides of the garden box. Third, you must plant seeds in a sunny area, including when it's cloudy or drizzling. Fourth, we would recommend making an automatic drip system for when you are away. Otherwise, water biweekly.
Hello, and today we are coming at you with our modeling water system. There we go. So as you can see, we are adding water into the system to show that we can essentially water our own garden without the need of basic human interaction. Now, as you can see from these two lovely gentlemen, they are adding water to the water bottles, which is supposed to represent jugs so that they can water our soil slash garden.
Possible, resourceful, and always ready to learn. We are Memorial STEM.
Next, Cindy Ball, Chief of Strategy and Innovation, will recognize our staff and students. Dr. Oates, Madam Vice Chair, and Mr. Kenny, would you please join me in presenting our staff and students' awards tonight, please?
This is on. You got it. Okay. Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board Members, and our guests. We are so glad you are here with us tonight. We have a few groups that we would like to recognize, and we are gonna start that group. So students, when I call your name, we're gonna do this by group. When I call your name, if you will please come up and receive your certificate, and then stay up front, and we'll do a group photo when we have everybody from your group up front together. Okay? All right. The Cotton Bowl and Consumer Judging is a competitive judging contest where Georgia 4-Hers learn about agriculture in our state, as well as marketing through developing commercials or advertisements. 4-Hers gain skills in making rational decisions, maximizing resources, and presenting effectively. The contest is made up of two competition areas: judging classes and advertisements and commercials. 4-Hers are required to judge four classes of consumer items or services. The students recognized this evening recently won honors competing against students from 11 other counties in the Northwest Georgia 4-H District. So tonight, we will recognize we have three students from our Magnet program, and we have a Heritage High School student and a Shoal Creek Elementary student. So first, winning third place in the senior commercial, and second place senior team at the Northwest District Georgia 4-H Consumer Judging Competition, Kelsey Andries. Winning second place senior team, Nathaniel Sneed. Also second place senior team, Rodrick Sneed. Also second place senior team, Elena Sneed. And taking home first place overall individual in the cloverleaf division, and second place cloverleaf commercial, and third place cloverleaf judging classes, so three placings there, Evelyn Basket. Behind me and take photos, and you can also find them all on our social media, our Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. Smiles, everyone smiles. Come on. Good. Congratulations. Yep. Our next group comes to us from Salem High School. The Salem High School Lady Running Knolls have accomplished another achievement, advancing to the GHSA Girls 3A State Cross Country Championship for the second consecutive year. That warrants applause. The Lady Running Knolls completed the regular season, finishing third place overall in the Clayton County Cross Country Series. At the GHSA Region 4 3A Championship, the Lady Running Knolls finished as a team in fourth place. Maya Barnes and Juliana Brown both led the way, placing in the top 15 runners, and were named All-Region Runners. Their performances, combined with the other team members, helped advance the team to the state championship. At the state championship meet, Maya and Juliana both placed and scored with top runners in the 3A state classification. Tonight, we congratulate the following team members and coaches for their outstanding season and making it all the way to the state championship for the second year in a row. Congratulations, team members, Maya Barnes, Juliana Brown, Latana Elatan, Mariah Chandler, Jakaya Asola, our coaches Lonnie White and Alec Jacobs. You have to hold these smiles for me, so keep smiling. Can't run away from this one. Keep smiling. That was good, wasn't it? Okay. One, two, three. Keep smiling. Are we good? Congratulations. Established in 1932, the Southern Association of Student Councils is an association of 15 southeastern states that provides high school and middle school level student leaders with opportunities for networking, building leadership skills, sharing ideas, participating in service projects, and getting motivated to make a difference in their schools, communities, and in their own lives. Their adult advisors enjoy the same benefits, plus the sharing of leadership curricula and strategies for supporting their students in becoming better leaders. The annual conference is held each fall and is the flagship event of the year. It brings together over 1,000 student leaders and their adult advisors for three days of networking, leadership training, idea sharing, inspiration, service learning, and fun. The conference is also where new officers are elected, competition winners are awarded, and milestone achievements are recognized. Tonight, we recognize the following students from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology for their achievements at the annual conference. First, winning second place in senior oratory at the Southern Association of Student Councils, Precious Babajade. Next, winning Outstanding Senior Scholarship Award, Trinity James. Winning third place photography, Prakash Gupta. Winning first place Outstanding Technology Project, Magnet News, Anias Moore. Also winning first place Outstanding Technology Project, Magnet News, Jesus Lopez. Winning first place Outstanding School Service Project, Periodic Table Cleanup, Trinity James. Yeah, some of these students have more than one award. Sorry, I forgot to tell you that. We did split them out this time. Winning second place Outstanding Print Media, Back to School Week Club and Team, Jessica Ree. Winning first place Outstanding Membership and Motivation, Prakash Gupta. Also winning first place Outstanding Membership and Motivation, and I know this student was not able to be here tonight, Abigail Buchanan. Also in this group, first place Outstanding Membership and Motivation, Kelsey Andries. First place Outstanding Technology Project, Magnet News, Alyssa Cornwall. Also first place Outstanding Technology Project, Magnet News, Kelsey Andries. And our advisor for student council, recognized with six awards as the Southern Association of Student, at the Southern Association of Student Councils Conference, Susan Powell. And that's our group. Big smiles, everyone. All right, on three. One, two, three. Hold it. Did you get it?
Yeah.
All right. Congratulations. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation is a not-for-profit organization that operates without government assistance and was established in 1955 specifically to conduct the annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Scholarships are underwritten by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, or NMSE, with its own funds and by approximately 320 business organizations and higher education institutions that share their goals of honoring the nation's scholastic champions and encouraging the pursuit of academic excellence. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Over 1.3 million juniors in about 21,000 high schools entered the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. Over 1.3 million juniors. Think about that. By taking the 2022 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, most of you know that as the PSAT or NMSQT, which served as an initial screen of the program entrance. Tonight, we will recognize a student from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology who qualified for the nationwide pool of semifinalists, representing less than 1% of high school seniors. Less than 1%. And includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. This student has the opportunity to continue in the competition and be awarded one of the 7,140 National Merit Scholarships that are all worth nearly $28 million that will be offered next spring. Congratulations, Trenton Folgham. He's not here. Well, we hope he watches the video because we really congratulate Trenton. What a huge accomplishment. And we have one. The Georgia Council of Teachers of Mathematics is an organization made up of classroom teachers from preschool to graduate school, in addition to non-teachers who just share an interest in mathematics education in the state of Georgia. Their mission is to promote a high-quality mathematics education for all students, encourage an active interest in mathematics and in mathematics education, promote ongoing professional development for mathematics education, and promote and reward excellence in the teaching of mathematics in the state of Georgia. Each year, one elementary, one middle, and one high school teacher are selected to receive the Excellence in Teaching Mathematics Award. Teachers across the state are nominated and must be a member of GCTM, have taught mathematics at least three years in Georgia, have strong content foundation in mathematics appropriate for their teaching level, show evidence of growth in teaching mathematics, and show evidence of professional involvement in GCTM, and have not received this award in the past five years. Tonight, we will recognize one of our teachers from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology for being this year's high school recipient of the Excellence in Teaching Mathematics Award. Congratulations to David Hornbeck. You all would just kind of close the gap there? Thank you, Mr. Kenny. All right. Good. Congratulations.
I'd like to call a five-minute recess so we can congratulate our families and students. Thank you very much.
Okay. We ready? It is now 7:35, and I would like to call the meeting back to order. Do we have any visitors tonight? No visitors. Okay. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Oats for cabinet updates.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chairwoman, our distinguished board members, executive cabinet, and those of our community who remain. We have one formal presentation this evening. As you know, and you certainly have heard, we always are mindful of potential breaches to our network and our system with respect to cybersecurity threats. And I asked our chief technology officer to talk with us briefly about our proactive measures in that regard. Derek.
Again, Dr. Oats, board members. Yeah, so tonight I'll talk to you about cybersecurity. And so for the last three or four years, we have been warned by the FBI, a lot of federal agencies, but specifically FBI and CISA, about cyber attacks increasing for school systems, for K-12 education systems. And so we have seen that because we are a soft target. So all school systems are really a soft target because of the information that we retain for students and for our employees. And so we have seen that over the last several years increase exponentially. And so I'm here to tell you, we are under attack daily because of that. And so we have hundreds of thousands of logs each day, and we see that our users are under attack and our data center is under attack. We're being probed constantly. And one of our main goals is to always protect our student information, right? Our students' information and our employees' information. And we take that very seriously here in Rockdale County. And so because of that, we wanted, we felt we needed to add another layer of security to our district. We have many layers of security, but we needed another layer of security because of that. And so over the spring last year, we conducted an extensive investigation to find a product that will help us monitor and detect issues in our system. And so, like I said, we have hundreds of thousands of logs that we have to go through on a daily basis. We have a very small team, and so that's very difficult to spend that time and to look for those things that happen in our system. And so in the spring, we found a product called Guardian 365. And so Guardian 365 is built and managed by a company called Forsight IT Solutions, and they are Microsoft Gold Partner. Microsoft recommended several companies, and they highly recommended Forsight IT Solutions. A gold partner means that's the highest level of partnership that you can have with Microsoft. And because of that, they're an award-winning, Microsoft-certified solution, and they offer help for customers to configure, test, and deploy Microsoft 365 and Azure Security Solutions. Forsight offers security experts, and they provide information on threat intelligence, hunting, analysis, monitoring, alerts, detection, and responses. And so part of this product, what they do is their aim is to accomplish the following three objectives. So they protect, they detect, and they respond. And so for protection, what they do is they protect our Microsoft environment. And so we have the security suite for Microsoft. And so part of this process was an onboarding process. And so we spent usually two to three days a week, an hour and a half to two hours, with an engineer from Forsight. And so we would go through, first we did a security questionnaire and a security score review, and then we would go through every one of the items that you see there, from Exchange Online to Microsoft Defender. We would go through each item, and we would look at the item, and we would increase the security of each one of those items. And it's really kind of, it's really similar to getting braces, right? When you go to the doctor or go to the orthodontist to get braces, when they put them on, they tighten them up, and they can't tighten them too tight, right? Because you can't sleep that night, right? And so it's the same process. We would tighten up each one of those to make sure that they were tight, but also we had to make sure students can learn the next day, right? And employees could do their job. And so we went through each one of those. And so it was a long process. It actually took two and a half, three months for the onboarding processes, the process, until they could start monitoring. So we started in July. They started monitoring at the end of September because of that process. The next part is detect. And so I have a question for you. When do you think burglars attack homes or burglarize homes statistically? When no one is at home. Actually, it's between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. because that's usually when no one is at home, right? And so it's the same for cyber criminals, right? For the past, actually, for the past six months, we've been investigating cyber attacks at various school districts across the nation. And one of the things we found is they would attack usually after hours, over the weekend, or during breaks. For instance, L.A. Unified, it happened over a break, right? And so that's why it's important that we chose this product, because they offer 24/7 monitoring, 365 days a year. And so they have a team of analysts that every day, every hour of the day, they're reviewing our logs to see what is going on in our Microsoft environment. They have round-the-clock engineers that we can contact at any time for support on that, and they investigate. Once they find something, they investigate that. And so they are looking at the users, the workstations, our servers. They're looking at all of our environment for that. And then they have a guaranteed SLA that even during the night, they will be monitoring us. The last thing is response. And so there's actually three levels of response. So when they find something, they have a low risk. So if they consider it a low risk, they will investigate that, and they will remediate that immediately, right? And so they don't even contact us for that. They will remediate that. The second part to that, if it's a medium risk, then they will email us immediately, and they will investigate it and start their remediation process. And then we will come alongside, and we will finalize that remediation. And then lastly, if it's a high risk, they will contact us. There's four of us that they have our phone numbers, and they will call us 24/7, 365 days a year, anytime. And they will contact us, and they will, we will work and partner with them to remediate whatever's going on in our system. And so if it's a user's account, if it's your laptop, whatever it may be, they will assist us with that and make sure that they are monitoring everything in our system. So is this a, are we 100% protected? No. We will never be 100% protected. But this is another layer, a very important layer, that we desperately needed to make sure that we were being monitored. There's other areas. We have to protect our network. We have to protect our wired network, our wireless network. We also have to protect our data side as well. And so we have a small team like I talked about, and this helps us greatly. And so it helps us with our main goal to make sure that we protect our student information and our employees' information. And so that's all I have tonight. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
I have a question for you. And I'm not that familiar with the security stuff. So the question I have is, are they just monitoring the Microsoft 365 applications that we're using? What about all the other software that we use that's not Microsoft?
They monitor all of our Microsoft Security Suite, which monitors everything else, if that makes sense, right? We have single sign-on. So for example, single sign-on, so our students are able to sign on to various different products. They, all of that is logged in the background, and so they monitor all of that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, board members, Dr. Oats. I'll be going over the final financial numbers for the month of October. All right, the revenue for October is 12.7 million. The revenue year-to-date is 40.9 million, which is 20.4% of our budget. Last October, we received 12.9 million, 39.5 million year-to-date, which is 21.8% of our budget. Expenditures for October, 18.4 million, 69.3 million year-to-date, which is 33.8% of our budget. Last October, we expended 15.3 million, 60.5 million year-to-date, which was 32.5% of our budget. Our outstanding income reserves at the end of October, $2,440,976. Our fund balance at the end of October is approximately 7.8 billion. Last year, we had 17.7 million. Assets, 7.8. All our liabilities are cleared, and fund balance at 7.8. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, just a few announcements. First, I'd like to say that I'm very, very proud of our Board of Education. Of course, this has been another banner year for our board in terms of you're being recognized for the eighth time as an exemplary Board of Education. And I received word today, and I do wish to share this, it's from GSBA. They said, "On behalf of Valerie Wilson," of course, who's the distinguished executive director of GSBA, "and the GSBA Board of Directors, congratulations to Rockdale County Board of Education and to the system on being named one of the recipients of the GSBA Leading Edge Award for 2023. This unique achievement recognizes innovative design and implementation of projects and programs by your school system that are having a significant and positive impact on your students. You are truly leading the way in student achievement and engagement, and we're honored to recognize your accomplishments." Now, they will honor our school district at the annual conference on Friday, December 1st, at the Awards Breakfast, which begins promptly at 8:30 at the Renaissance Waverly Hotel in Atlanta. And of course, they've indicated that if the superintendent and/or board chair or others are present, they'll ask us to accept the award on behalf of the school system. I do know that most of us are planning to be in attendance, and those who will be, I'll ask you to, all of us, to accept this award on behalf of the district. But I wish to commend the board, our school district, and all of those who've worked hard to make this a reality. So thank you. Specifically, I will say that this, this year, the award centered around our person, innovative personnel solutions such as Elevate K-12, Entilage, our partnerships with higher ed institutions to para, to teacher pieces, but it's how we sought to address the teacher shortage and vacancies that are fairly pervasive. So congratulations to everyone, because this is truly a team effort. The governance team, the school district executive cabinet, senior cabinet members, and all the way to our schools. The other thing I wish to share is that, you know, it's always a bittersweet when you recognize someone who's going to be making a transition professionally. I wish for us to recognize someone tonight who has had a distinguished career that has spanned more than three decades in both the private and public educational sectors. This person also has the distinction of having presided over a major department and division for us and for their work, working together collectively with their team. Their department has been a multiple-time recipient of awards at the state agency level. And also, I think probably one of the most important distinctions this person has from my perspective is this person was my first executive cabinet hire. And so if you would, I want you to join me in saluting an amazing career as we celebrate the retirement, the immediate impending retirement of Dr. Kim Back. Kim recently celebrated a milestone birthday as well, and I think she enjoyed herself quite well. Lastly, let me just say that you've heard me share just a wide array of achievement and accomplishments, and one of them has been the fact that I said we had a record number of Governor's Honors Program semifinalists and also nominees. Well, we officially got our list today, and I share this with our board in our weekly board brief that'll be going out tomorrow. But I think 31 students, and it's very, very exciting. And so you'll be able to see, surely would you like to add anything to be added to that? But it's impressive, 31 students who are crossing that threshold, and so they'll be sharing information on next steps. But that's very, very exciting. So Madam Chairwoman, I rest. That's all I have to share in the way of superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Oats. I would like to ask the board to review the important financial information Mr. Ho has uploaded under the section of information. And the board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in October. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all board meetings held in October?
So moved. Backing Akita Palmer.
And motion to approve the October board meetings as presented has been made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There is no old business, but there is new business. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve all personnel recommendations, resignations, and terminations for November 2023 as presented? A motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation has been made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero vote. Thank you. Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items, and the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, action items under the consent agenda?
So moved. Heather.
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Duncan, and it's seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
So.
Is there a second?
Second, Akita.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Palmer. The meeting is concluded. All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. The meeting is concluded at 7:53 p.m.
Told you.